مرون بالمعروف وينهون عن المنكر و أولئك هم المفلحون صدق الله العظيم الحمد لله الحمد لله رب العالمين والصلاة والسلام على رسوله الكريم وعلى آله واصحابه اجمعين ربي شحى يسدري ويسر لي امري وحل لقطة تمن ليصاني يفقه قولي السلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته everyone thank you all for joining tonight الحمد لله we have a pretty good turnout so far Insha Allah more people will join in And just wanted to highlight a few this one point or two points about you know why we're here and why we're actually joining this right And how it's important for us to join These kinds of meetings you know town hall meetings general body meetings Insha Allah And to contribute in any way towards our community Insha Allah Right the verse that I just recited from Surah Ali Imran verse number 103 واعتصموا بحبل الله جميعا Right that hold on firmly to the rope of Allah سبحانه وتعالى جميعا altogether right Which means that a person can't Help develop or sustain a community or anything rather Alone right it has to be done with A group of people that has to be done with A a a community that's working towards a same common goal for The spiritual development for the educational development of our community Insha Allah وتعالى No واعتصموا بحبل الله جميعا Together hold firmly to the rope of Allah سبحانه وتعالى so this for you know All of us here right now we're all right now at this very moment holding firmly To the rope of Allah سبحانه وتعالى ولا تفرقوا and do not you know divide between each other Because when you when you are holding firmly together then there will be no division But if it's only one or two people or three people then There will be division right but when you're when you're working towards a common goal when you're working towards A a you know a beautiful trying to Reach a beautiful result for our community for our youth for Next generations of Muslims you know within East Kabul within Marietta within the United States Insha Allah وتعالى This is where it starts you know from these kind of meetings from these kinds of Events that we that we that we try to hold Insha Allah وتعالى Now Allah سبحانه وتعالى he actually says He says that وجبت محبتي وجبت محبتي للمتحابين فيا وجبت محبتي للمتحابين فيا That Allah Allah's love becomes obligated Upon that person or upon those people Who meet for you know and they love each other for the sake of Allah سبحانه وتعالى That they you know they work together they love each other they are Working towards a common goal they are you know cooperating Allah سبحانه وتعالى's mercy his love becomes a waajib for that person right And you know who doesn't want that who doesn't want for Allah's love to become obliged upon us Insha Allah right So Insha Allah all of us being here I you know I fully believe that we are all Insha Allah recipients of Allah's and we are you know The the recipients of Allah سبحانه وتعالى's mercy and his love and Insha Allah Through this town hall meeting and through many more meetings in the future We're gonna increase together we're gonna grow together and Insha Allah we're gonna see results For ourselves for our youth for our generations to come after Insha Allah وتعالى جزاك الله خير ام باد موسن and everyone else you guys can take it away Insha Allah You on mute?
السلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته جرّاك الله خير امام اكيب thank you so much that was a Very good start to our meeting thank you so much Moving on and I know you want to finish on time so I would like to start right away if it moves next Okay there you go so I just want to start with a brief 2020 updates Many of you who have visited in the last year on 2020 probably would have known most of them Lot of lot of us stayed away from the masjid we had covid spread all over we wanted to be safe Is my camera on oh it's not on There you go sorry guys my camera was not on so we wanted to be safe we wanted to be you know Take care of our elders our seniors our women and children so we had a lot of restrictions last year Imam Akib joined us on time Alhamdulillah He was tech savvy so he was able to you know adopt and adapt to the covid restrictions that We quickly moved a lot of programs online You know we had our Sunday school we turned into a virtual Sunday school last year Alhamdulillah we had a lot of students learning online it was new for everybody it was a learning experience for almost You know all the parents some of them had tough time figuring out how it works but Alhamdulillah we all figured it out And we learnt a lot Alhamdulillah 2020 was the most challenging year As far as I've seen and I'm sure you all would agree with us we lost a lot of our beloved friends Some of us lost our family members So may Allah give Jannah to all our friends and families who passed away during this time And may Allah give them the highest place in the paradise I mean So Alhamdulillah it was a it was a pretty tough year but still we managed to go through We were able to launch our website we were We also started a hip planning for the hip program We sent out surveys we figured out that you know our company needs a part-time hip program so we We embarked on that journey Alhamdulillah we have We have a lot of interest from our community members who's who's Who wants their kids to Insha Allah do part-time hives So we are working on it Insha Allah Imam Akib is gonna come up with a detailed plan Next year this this year Insha Allah and we're gonna start that program very soon And of course we had all of various virtual programs we had our Tuesday Halakas we had our Friday programs Alhamdulillah we have been busy even though there were covid restrictions all around us But we are looking forward for better 2021 hoping everybody gets vaccinated And we can get back to our regular plans and Insha Allah we'll discuss about that what we are gonna do for Ramadan In the next slides or the slides towards the end we'll talk in detail about it we have like A focus Ramadan section where we'll talk in detail about how are we going to address Ramadan and how we're gonna take care of it Insha Allah And of course a lot of new Muslim members also moved into our community so we all welcome them Yes it was virtual but you know it was it was a Alhamdulillah it was a blessing from Allah سبحانه وتعالى that we have more Muslim members join our community Alhamdulillah So those were 2020 updates moving forward I'm gonna quickly introduce our I'm gonna ask our executive team to self-introduce themselves Alhamdulillah we have a this time We had many positions open and a lot of people applied for these positions And we were able to fill these positions Alhamdulillah we have a full Pack team looking forward for 2021 2022 To serve our community to serve our Dean and make this a successful Masjid Insha Allah so to begin with I would ask Adnan Khouryshy to just start with left to right so Everybody knows me by now I'm the president I've been the president for the last two years 2019 and 2020 2020 was eaten away by covid so we couldn't do much there But 2019 I was the president and then I was reappointed for 2021 2022 So Insha Allah I hope that you know I can serve the community and the And our Dean to the best I can to my best of my abilities Insha Allah So let's start with introducing Adnan you can go ahead let's start from left to let's start from Left to right and then keep moving each of you please introduce yourself And then we can move on to the next slides Insha Allah
Okay thank you brother Mosen Salam khabron my name is Adnan Khouryshy Like brother Mosen mentioned I'm one of the new members in the community I moved here about a year and a half ago Prior to here I was in California but then before then I was I was in Marietta Georgia I was very active with that Mashhad Hadaya Launching with Sunday School activities But I'm from originally from Chicago Illinois I'm an aeronautical engineer I work for Lockheed Martin Very excited I've met few of the members at ECIC and everyone's full of energy mushroom are very High spirited so I'm excited Insha Allah to help out in any capacity I can and look forward to meeting meeting everyone جزاك الله خير سلام
Can you guys hear me fine Mosen? Yeah perfect Salam khabron guys my name is Parwiz even I am Alhamdulillah a new member to the community My family and I moved to Atlanta in August of last year And before that we were in Chicago for almost Eighteen years and for a brief period I was in Boston for a year Alhamdulillah in Chicago I was also the treasurer for a masjid called Islamic Foundation North for six years So my neat was to be close to the masjid and Alhamdulillah very very happy to be close to the masjid We can literally walk to the masjid Alhamdulillah so with that neat I'm Wanting to help ECIC and very happy to be part of the committee here and I'm looking forward to serving all of you Insha Allah
Salaam alaikum My name is Meher John my husband is brother Mosen And I have been part of the ECIC community since its inception We've lived in Marietta for about fourteen Years or so and I actually grew up in New York My background is in international development so I've worked with different NGOs and European organizations over the years And I also taught briefly at Elm Academy and Yeah so I've been involved with the Women's Committee for a couple of years now And look forward to seeing more sisters join me I think we'll post the email addresses for I guess all the committee members maybe in the chat so if you want to reach out You know please do so if you're interested in helping out with the Women's Committee Or with any other aspects of the of the masjid Insha Allah Salaam alaikum
Salaam alaikum I wasn't sure which Order the people were supposed to go in because I believe mine is different from everyone else's but my name is Ahmed Ahmed Awian I've been here for about seven or eight years I have participated in Calling of the Athan so many people know my voice And I've also worked as volunteer for Sunday School And lately I have been working with the Zakat and Sadqah Committee as leading that And what we do is we screen all of the requests for help And we try our best to distribute the help As justly and equitably as possible Whether that means we purchase food or pay rent or just give someone some money And as Ramadan is almost upon us and many people need to pay their zakat You can do that through the masjid and we will do our best to distribute that to the needy around here and if of course There's any additional we sometimes Take advantage of other organizations who are distributing to the needy and we help them out as well So if you're interested in helping the needy we actually Need more people to help us be aware of those people in need Because there will come a time in which you will wish that you will know somebody Who you can distribute your zakat to so that you can fulfill your Islamic obligations and Is important that we all come together and we help each other find those needy people and help them Receive that which is their due rights so with no further ado can the next person please go ahead
Salaam alaikum my name is Ahmed Amir I'm the head of the IT Committee I work on the website and our app And I do everything else related to technology And we want more people to join the IT Committee so if you're interested you can email me
Salaam alaikum this is Amir and Although my name appears with construction as well as cemetery committee The construction committee can almost is done with this job since the building is New building is almost ready to go and we'll talk a little bit more about it so Insha Allah I do head up the cemetery chair As a chairperson and we have a tremendous amount of people that offer help in the committee But I will say this I'm trying to retire and From this committee so I'm soliciting help from any upcoming Members of the community who can lead this task Ahmad you're on my target list thank you so much
Salaam alaikum my name is Ahmed Nasr Like brother Mosen was saying I'm one of those relatively newcomers to the community Been in East Call for a couple of years now Prior to being here we used to live in Sugar Hill Georgia and was part of the Mashhad Rahman incoming Group almost for five years and prior to that we have lived in Michigan and Ohio You know these are of course along with brother Sadiq here I help out with operations and that sort of catch off for Any help that we need maintaining the musala and the grounds and everything and all the various programs that we run so we always looking for folks who can help us out and Help volunteers so please reach out And Insha Allah once this pandemic is over looking forward to meeting everyone Insha Allah in person so with that I'll turn over to brother Sadiq here
Salaam alaikum this is Sadiq Sayed We have been in the around ECIC has been around almost five year now We moved from San Diego And we love to be part of this masjid I don't have any prior experience to work for any masjid this is first time I'm working Associate with the masjid to doing something right so Insha Allah I'll try my best to help in operation areas I'll work with him brother Ahmed And feel free to give feedback and let us know what's wrong And what we can do better I'm looking forward for the feedback because feedback will help us to do our job better so thanks a lot
Salaam alaikum wa alaikum wa barakatuh I think everyone The newest comer to the to the community Insha Allah and I'm I'm thinking a lot of you a lot of you guys are tired of me talking But one thing I do want to say is the the youth cheer for girls Sister Quran just recently joined us as the youth cheer for girls but she's not here tonight She couldn't make it tonight due to her prior commitment but Insha Allah you'll get to meet her soon Insha Allah وتعالى And she'll also have she's also looking for other younger youth girls you know preferably in high school Or freshmen in college to help her with you know having more events for females for youth you know specifically for youth You know in our masjid right because a lot of times we are catering towards The youth the boys but we don't get to equally cater to the girls right and we want to make that equal and we want to have that For them as well Insha Allah وتعالى so hopefully we'll get to meet her soon and if you guys or if any parents here are interested To present this to their children Insha Allah they can help out help us out and help get on Sister Kira now Insha Allah At the masjid alongside brother Hamad which is who is next Insha Allah
Salam khabron can everyone hear me? Yes
Yes we can hear you
Yes we hear you
Alright sorry there's something usually wrong with my Zoom but humbla I'm the The youth chair for the boys or the young men Humbla I was a young man before In this community so you've been around here for fifteen sixteen years humbla so Very excited about this opportunity I definitely grew up in this area so I know a lot of a lot of the the boys and the youth in the area so Definitely looking forward to putting on good programs for the youth Insha Allah And you know bringing the youth back to the masjid
Brother Zebi are you there?
Not sure if I'm here
Salaam alaikum
Wa alaikum salaam
Alhamdulillah I'm really shukur That the EC decided to do this but I think it's a good start I think we have a good seem to be we are moving in the right right direction Physically we have multi hall we have a cemetery is very busy And above that I'm really happy and Alhamdulillah The volunteers center of volunteerism in the cemetery And the barbecue precipitation is make my heart happier and Yes hopefully when we have the covid nineteen behind our back Or at least we are under control then a nice to go back so I'm looking forward to 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 work with the new I welcome the new members new executive committees members but None but the purveyors and and others that this is the I think I have the feeling that hopefully Our job is to plan Without planning we are playing for failure So this is a part of the plan so I think at the end of the day we plan our best and we rely on our Talat to to assist us And that's our motto Insha Allah وتعالى جزاك الله خير for for the president and the team to make this happen
Thank you so much just for Brother Zebi leads the clinic we have a ECIC clinic On Saturdays because of covid we had to shut it down but Alhamdulillah this clinic serves everybody in In Georgia meaning anybody who does not have an insurance Can come to the clinic and take its services Muslim non-Muslim anybody's welcome Alhamdulillah So it's a community service literally a community service irrespective of you know which religion they belong to Alhamdulillah Moving on A quick run through on the cemetery updates Brother Hamad do you mind going ahead and Talking on the slide make it quick Insha Allah Brother Hamad Alright Amir do you want to just take it up quick I don't hear Hamad I think he has difficulty with this
Okay sorry there we go I was able to unmute myself
Okay
Yeah so just a quick update on the cemetery Unfortunately you know we've had quite a bit of burials in 2020 You know a lot of that unfortunately was due to covid nineteen We did have volunteers from you know different massage in the area so ECIC Al-Hidayah Al-Furqan And you know the different mushids in the area you know come together and kind of lean on that janazah committee And so due to the pandemic we've had to kind of Shift in terms of the procedures and limiting the number of people so If anyone has been to a janazah you know we only allow specific number of people there Just due to the social distancing guidelines We made an investment in 2020 to allow for The cemetery to have a hydraulic casket lowering system so instead of having someone Or two people go into the grave to grab the box or the body we have that lowering system so it makes things a lot easier We needed we we invested in a tractor as well to assist in digging the graves Just due to the sheer number of the of the graves that were needed and Construction of a new fence was also done in 2020 Very recently I want to say less than a month ago there were There was a fire at the cemetery unfortunately and about fifty graves were impacted by this fire So we did have to raise some money in order to you know clean up the graves that were affected That cleanup included removing the top material from from the graves And the wooden frames from them and And replacing them so you know we needed some new materials Humbla we had a lot of volunteers come And you know help us with this effort it took a lot of manpower we had one cleanup last week or The week before and then we had one today as well and humbla about seventy percent of the Of the work is done so we're gonna have one last one next week next Saturday Insha Allah So we definitely need volunteers to come if anyone is interested You can definitely contact myself or brother Amir these are just some pictures of the turnout that we had Humbla we there were a good number of people everyone was wearing masks and The weather was very nice so it was it was a good community involvement from not only our mushid but Al-Hidayah Al-Furqan and all those surrounding mushids as well for you know everyone to come together and Take care of a place that we're all going to be in one day
جزاك الله خير thank you so much moving on Since Amir is our chair for the multipurpose hall I would have Amir by speak on this slide Insha Allah Amir back please go ahead
جرّاك الله خير so Alhamdulillah the biggest good news is we Have now the official permission from Cobb County To occupy the building so Alhamdulillah we have the certificate of occupancy that's the term they use The permission we have from Cobb County now after going through a lot of inspections Is is to allow almost thousand people nine hundred something People are officially allowed in there it's a state of the art building with many Requirements that we had to fulfill with respect to safety For accommodating thousand people in case of a fire emergency and things like that sprinkler system a fire alarm system Monitoring you name it is is very detailed and so far we have spent The total project cost I should say is a little over one point five million dollars we still haven't done the math As the bills keep coming but I would say it's just slightly over one point five million dollars total cost Few bills still to be paid so we're trying to catch up and finish off paying the last few bills Today we had a cleaning crew cleaning up the building the dust and everything else and probably take one more round of cleaning To get to a position where we can occupy and Mosen will make the decision and announce We do have about three hundred thousand dollars in loans that we have to repay From some very generous brothers in our community and and from outside the community who helped us So we didn't have to stall we could get this building done before Ramadan so Alhamdulillah we're grateful To Allah swam Talat first and to all the brothers who helped us donated us loaned us Made Dua and and just gave us support So what's left to do there are a few still things that we weren't able to complete so far Audiovisual system is still to be installed the security system although we have cameras installed But access control and things like that we have pre-wiring done we don't don't have a system installed yet We do not have appliances in the kitchen yet like Cooktop fridge or dishwasher we have Accommodation and places for them but we have not purchased that primarily because of funds We wanted to do the important thing so we can open up the hall before Ramadan So that's kind of where we are at and Insha Allah Mosen will talk a little bit more about opening off it There is that it Mosen right? Here are some pictures
Yeah
For today so the flooring was done recently as you can see It's a pretty expensive flooring that really can be suitable for basketball volleyball Batminton we have all the three courts painted over there in different colors and it can be used for any events So it's a multipurpose flooring very expensive flooring but we made the Decision to go ahead and make the right investments one time so we'll get it right so Alhamdulillah it's looking really nice
جرّاك الله خير thank you so much Let's moving on to the next one Next slide is a quick update on the On the financials this is our profit and loss sheet as of this twenty I'm not gonna go through each and every line item because it's gonna take a lot of time It's just a rough overview for everybody to see what it contains To make it easy Insha Allah I'm gonna email this PDF to you So that you guys can at your leisure sit down go through it and understand what it takes to run the masjid You know what are what are you know Expenses that we had Alhamdulillah I mean overall you know we do collect zakat we do collect sadqah We distribute all funds this year Alhamdulillah Ahmed Duvain was talking about we helped a lot of people you know In helping pay their rents stopping their evictions We made many people self-sustainable we got them purchased cars for them So that they can be mobile they can go to the work they can get a job so Alhamdulillah We were able to help the needy in and around us right so One of the key aspect of zakat is to help the local community A single dollar went for the local people to help out so Alhamdulillah We are happy that we were able to do that and again generous donations from our Community members we were able to pull it along Otherwise it is really not without our community communities help it's really not possible So جرّاك الله خير for each and every one of you who contributed who helped make it happen so I'm gonna move over quickly because I'm gonna send this This expense report profit and loss report to all our members Of our community so that they can you know read it look at it again Insha Allah So moving on this is the one that I know many of us have logged in right to hear about what are our Ramadan plans What do we plan to do like I got a call from Somebody yesterday this morning I guess like I'm I'm ready to come for Ramadan Tarabi What do I need to do I was like Alhamdulillah you're welcome Join our session tonight and hear more about it so what are our plans what what we expect we expect We do not we are not planning to have any iftars in the open or in the inside the masjid Very simple Very simple reason is when you do iftar, you've got to take your masks out and then you're exposing each other when you're talking, when you're eating. So we do not want to encourage that. So we actually are asking not to bring food to houses or from your homes and try to eat here, rather drive in to the masjid. At the time of the opening of the fast, open the, open your fast with dates and water in your car. If you have not, if you have not brought the dates, Insha Allah, we will supply them to you. Just honk us or wave us from your car and we'll come to your car and supply the date and water. Bring, but please open it in your, in your car. Stay inside your car, open your fast. Once you're done opening the fast and making the dua, head towards our new building. Insha Allah, our new building is going to be set up for Fajr, Maghrib, Isya and Taraweeh. So we're going to have three, three salas there, the Farid Salas, Fajr, Maghrib and Isya inside the big hall. So we'll have, head, head towards there, you will be, everybody's going to be assigned a spot. The procedures, we're going to discuss how we will get there. But this is where you're going to do our salas, Fajr, Maghrib, Isya and Taraweeh will be inside the new building. Zuhra and Asr will be at the older building because we don't expect a lot of crowd to come for Zuhra and Asr. So we think we can handle it at the older building. So the next big question, who can attend, right? That's always another question that you always had. You know, youngsters want to attend, they have been away from the masjid for the whole year. They have been missing, some of them have forgotten about the masjid probably, right? So given that we all are vaccinated and alhamdulillah, most of us are either eighty percent, meaning they got the first shot or they're going to get the second shot. We said, we decided that everyone is welcome to attend. Everyone is welcome to attend, but restrictions about how we, how we handle ourselves in the, in the, in the new building. We are requiring masks at all times irrespective of you're fully vaccinated, you're half vaccinated, it does not, you have to have masks all the time. Inside the building, outside the building, walking from your car all the way to the building, whatever it is, you have to be wearing a mask. You bring your own prayer rug and you bring your own bottle. That's why I said B-I-O-R, bring your own rug and B-I-O-B is bring your own bottle. If you need water, you can, you know, we, we have fountain and we have water supply there, but it's better to bring your own bottle. That way we do not provide those plastic bottles that we used to provide because that is not good for the environment. So we would, we would like to be a green masjid, Insha Allah. While you're inside the building, we'll maintain the social distancing. We will have markers. Where are your spots? Where do you get to pray? The six feet social distancing between each of you and at all times, right? So maintain no, no huddling around. I know we haven't seen each other for a long time. Yes, but still maintain the distance, Insha Allah. And then parents who want to bring the children, younger ones, you remember they typically run around parking lot, playing around, you know, goofing around, having fun. What we are recommending is saying that you bring your children, you keep them with you all the time, from start to the finish. Nobody, we should not find any kid running around in the parking lot or, you know, hanging out with other children, playing at the, playing. We are not ready for that yet. Ready for games or, you know, a fun time in the parking lot or inside the building yet. When we are ready, we'll let you know. But for now, we expect every parent to keep the children with them all the time. And if we find that your children are running around and, you know, having, giving us a difficult time, we will, we will have to ask you to leave. The reason for that is we want to respect others who are having the children with them. You know, they're keeping the children with them and Insha Allah, we're trying to avoid spreading of, if at all, there's some, some child has a COVID, we're trying to avoid spreading of the COVID to other people, right? So Insha Allah, that's the only reason. There is no other reason. I mean, the reason is pandemic. We are still in the midst of a pandemic. It's not over yet. Hence these measures. I hope you all understand that and I hope you all will cooperate on that. I know we used to play the basketball at the back, backyard in the, in the masjid. At this point, we would not let anybody play basketball either or hang out in the, in the parking lot. And the main thing, bathrooms are available. It is used at your own risk. If it's for emergency, go ahead and use them, but remember you're taking a risk because when you're done with the bathroom, you have to do wadhu and while you're doing wadhu, you will be taking your mask off, right? So using the bathroom at your own risk, but it will be available because you're going to be there for Taraweeh. The Taraweeh is going to last for an hour and in that, not tell anybody how you can use the bathroom. So we will let you use the bathroom, but at your own risk. And the final, the most important one is before you enter the new building, you will have to scan a QR code so that we, who is in the building for, for contact tracing. If something happens tomorrow and we need to let everybody know who was inside the building, that, you know, there was a incident, we'll have to let everybody know and we'll have to let CDC know about it. Hence we have made it mandatory that you will have to register online or register using an app. So we have an app called ECIC. We have just launched an app. By the way, that's actually a good news. We have launched an ECIC app. Alhamdulillah, this app is going to remind you about Salaah times. It's going, it can, all the events you can see in the same app. You can, you know, actually join the meetings through the app directly. You can click on the link and it'll take you to the Zoom call or the live call. It has Quran in it, it has duas and it has something else, registration. So you'll have to go register yourself. Provide your name, address, age, all the details, just one time. This is not like the Jumma that we used to have where you have to go back and register every Friday. I know it was cumbersome, so we got rid of that. Going forward, we'll only have app. You register once and when you are ready to enter, all you do is click on the app. It will show you the QR code, scan your code and you enter. That's it. Alhamdulillah. No more hassles, no more, you know, it's first come, first served. As soon as the capacity is full, we'll stop everybody from entering. And this app will let me know that. This app is, is going to let me know that we are going to reach capacity or have reached capacity. As soon as we reach capacity, the app is going to let me know that we cannot have any more people at the building. So we'll have to stop entry. So it's going to be first come, first served, Insha Allah. And we'll go to follow the same system for Jumma as well. You scan and you get it. There's no more registration for Jumma like we had before. I'm so sorry to put you through that. It was cumbersome, but it took time for us to develop this whole system. So Zakallah for cooperating and being patient with us. Thank you so much. Moving on, of course, to do all this work, we need a lot of help. So I'm requesting our youngsters, our youth, especially the ones who are vaccinated, even fifty percent vaccinated, right? Even one shot, if you have got, please register for volunteering during Ramadan. There's a lot of work. Even for example, for this new pre-build, building to set up, I need help. Like we need to set up the building with, you know, the mats. Need to put the lines in for everybody to come. We need to organize. I still have to figure out, you know, we need to get the, stand for the shoes. I have to figure out where do I get that from or, you know, we have to see how it fits in. So there's a lot of work pending. It's not like we are, we are ready, but we still have to get prepared for everybody to come, right? So Insha Allah, we have to do that. There's some work remaining for that and I need, we need help. The whole executive committee, the operations team, everybody needs help. So please register in the link below, ECIC.org. If you go to the announcements section, you will find a link. After this program ends, we will put the link there. Just click on the link and register yourself if you want to volunteer. That way we can reach out to you and figure out how, how best you can help us. And we just listed on some of the activities that we could do during Ramadan. We need to monitor the cameras for security. We need to make sure everybody is masking correctly, social distancing and distributing with dates and water. So some of the activities during Ramadan, we need help with. But overall, we need volunteers to help us make this a successful Ramadan, Insha Allah. And also very important point I want to make, all of these plans are fluid. What do I mean by that is if tomorrow CDC says we can do a gathering of three hundred people, we cannot, we cannot have more than fifty people, we will work with that. We will work according to CDC guidelines. Things will change. I've heard about variants in the horizon. If variants become, I'm talking about the COVID-19 variants, if they become a problem, they become a problem, then we'll have to work with you and figure out, you know, what would be the next best step, right? So this, this is the plan as of now, Insha Allah. We hope to continue with these plans and if anything changes, we'll inform the community and I, please help cooperate with us, just like you did in 2020. Let's write this pandemic and then Insha, together. Okay, and I'll hand over to our Imam. Aqib.
So I go, Insha Allah, so I guess we could talk more about the programs for, before Ramadan, pre-Ramadan programs as well as programs you want to, Insha Allah, have within Ramadan. So for the pre-Ramadan programs, I know, as we all know that we're roughly a week away from Ramadan, starting Insha Allah. May Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala let us all reach Ramadan. Allahumma bala ghna Ramadan. I mean, but before that, Insha Allah, so we see on, on April tenth and eleventh, we'll have two programs. And just for Ramadan preparation, Insha Allah, so on April tenth, at two thirty, meaning after Zuhra, two thirty PM, Insha Allah, we'll have Ramadan program, virtual Ramadan program for adults. Like we had similar, similar to what we had last year when I, when I first joined. We had like a pre-Ramadan program talking about just some rules and how we can prepare ourselves, Insha Allah, to fully benefit from Ramadan, Insha Allah. And on the, on the following day, on April eleventh, I, I kept it for three PM for the youths. We just want to just keep them separate, Insha Allah, so they can have more. If they have any questions they, they want to ask, they'll, they'll, they'll have, they'll be more comfortable to ask those questions, Insha Allah, without the adults being there and maybe it'll be a more relaxed session for them, Insha Allah, as well, for them to how, how they can also benefit from Ramadan because adults and youths is going to be different. Adults are working, people throughout the day, taking care of the family and the youth are going to be mostly at home or, you know, during, during their classes, high school, college, et cetera. So Insha Allah, they can also benefit from Ramadan and also help us volunteer at the mushid as well. So those are this upcoming weekend, right? April tenth and April eleventh, Insha Allah. April tenth, at two thirty PM for the adults and we'll send those flyers out, Insha Allah, as well. And April eleventh for three PM for the youth, Insha Allah, too, as well. So some of the youth that are on here on this call tonight, keep that in mind and we're also going to share that with you guys, Insha Allah, in the youth group. We also have ECIC Sunday School Ramadan Food Box Drive, something that we've been talking about in the, in the last few weeks in our Monday and Friday night sessions that the Sunday School program, Sunday School students have a project they've been working on to, you know, hopefully collect funds and we did, alhamdulillah, we collected a lot of funds from you all, Zakallah Khair, for that to put together boxes for people that will need to, you know, fast in Ramadan, for them to eat suhur and break their fast, have iftar in the month of Ramadan, Insha Allah. So that's going to be a very, you know, whoever contributed, whoever is willing to contribute more, Insha Allah, and also to physically contribute, meaning help us, Insha Allah, pack the boxes. That'll be between the eighth and tenth, we'll, we'll, we'll start, Insha Allah, we'll start just preparing boxes, et cetera. And on the eleventh is when Sunday School students will come and they'll help us as well. So if you want to help, Insha Allah, just reach out to me or, or any, any, any one of us, Insha Allah, Hamad, but the Muslim and we can help, help you with that, Insha Allah. And this is going to be a very beautiful thing, actually. So if you contribute towards this, you're actually contributing towards someone's, you know, iftar in Ramadan. So that's, you know, there's no, that, that's pretty high in reward up there, right? Providing, you know, even water or even a date for Ramadan. But if we're going to provide a whole food box, Insha Allah, will they have, you know, flour, oil, beans and et cetera, Insha Allah. That's a lot of reward for each and every one of us, Insha Allah. So try to participate and contribute in any way, whether it's financial, whether it's physical, Insha Allah. Because we need to get that done, Insha Allah, before Ramadan starts and people have these food boxes at home. They can prepare and plan their suhur and iftar, Insha Allah.
Imam Aqib, Zakat is eligible for this one, right?
Zakat is also eligible for that, Insha Allah, as well, because it's going towards the less fortunate in our community and Insha Allah, whoever else needs it in the broader community, Insha Allah, as well. So that's for the pre-Ramadan programs and Ramadan programs, they're all going to be virtual except for Taraweeh. Everything else, educational wise or spiritual wise, Insha Allah, will be virtual. And, you know, we're going to be praying, Insha Allah, as you know, by the Muslim mentioned in the previous slides, that five times salas, Fajr and Maghrib, Isya and Taraweeh is going to be in the, you know, the, the new facility and Zuhra and Asr is going to be in the old, in the masjid, in the old facility, Insha Allah. And we will be having a shortened Taraweeh this year. Eight rakaat Taraweeh, Insha Allah, because we just want to wrap everything up in, you know, in an hour or so with, with Isya and Taraweeh and maybe a brief summary of what we're going to cover that day in Taraweeh as well. So we'll have eight rakaat Taraweeh, Insha Allah. And then that will be followed by a virtual Quran recitation, Insha Allah, just so we can complete a khatam in Ramadan, Insha Allah, right? So I mean, the main thing of our Ramadan is, you know, the, the main thing that's highlighted in Ramadan is the Quran. So we can make individual khatams, we can do it, Insha Allah, as a community, you know, a communal khatam and also engage in the night prayers, whether it's Taraweeh, whether it's more prayers during the night Qiyamah, Lay, Tujood at home, Insha Allah. Those, those are the main key priorities for us in Ramadan to excel in, Insha Allah. So we'll, we'll be trying to cover all those, you know, trying to prove Taraweeh as well. It's not going to be a full twenty rakaat like we usually do, but we'll still try to get the reward from that as well as we can continue our Salaahat, Insha Allah, at home and, and followed by a Quran Khatam as well. And, you know, I, I know it's going to be kind of late some of the nights because, you know, by the time we're done praying Isya and eight rakaat Taraweeh and going home. So we're going to have a brief synopsis or summary of what we cover in Taraweeh that night between Isya and Taraweeh. So after Isya, after your prayer sunnah, we'll have like, you know, the five to seven minute brief summary of what we're going to cover, Insha Allah, so that we, we are just, just know what we're going to be reading and what, 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 what we'll hear during that night. And when we go home, we can join in on the virtual session, just relax, maybe have some tea, et cetera, and just listen to the Quran and then we can all have, you know, a good night, Insha Allah, for that and prepare for the next day, Insha Allah. So that's, that's for Taraweeh, that's going to be, you know, eight rakaat Taraweeh is going to be in the masjid and the rest of the programs will be virtual, Insha Allah. So number three on the list is.
Taraweeh also will be broadcasted live.
Insha Allah, yeah. So yeah, that'll also be broadcasted live, Insha Allah. I mean, just, just for people to hear, not, not for people to follow, Insha Allah, right?
So Imam, laa wa laa, will be allowed for Taraweeh only when?
Yes, I, I think brother Muslim mentioned that.
I mentioned everybody's, please hold your questions toward the end, but answer to that right now is yes, all, everybody's allowed to attend, Insha Allah.
Okay, thank you.
Attend as long as you're following the rules, right, Insha Allah. So as long as you follow the rules, you'll be, you'll be allowed to attend, Insha Allah. So that comes from me too. If I break the rules, then I can't come, right? So, you know, everyone has to be, everyone has to be careful, Insha Allah. Okay, and then the next program, as some of you guys know, or a lot of you guys that joined last year, we had a, a brief tafsir every day of like one or two verses of Surah Rahman and I was just trying to memorize Surah Rahman and a lot of you, mashallah, did. Because a lot of you did actually, after Ramadan, reach out to me and actually read the, read the Surah Rahman on the phone because we were still, you know, at home at that time, we weren't at the masjid. And a lot of you did memorize Surah Rahman, mashallah. You know, I applaud all of you for doing that. So this, this year will be a little bit easier. Surah Rahman was a bit longer, more verses, more shorter verses. And this year, Insha Allah, we'll try to cover Surah Sajda. So it says here, become a Hafid of Surah Sajda. So, you know, if you do one verse a day, so it says that has thirty verses. So one verse a day in Ramadan, Insha Allah. If you memorize it a day and then you, we'll, we'll try to go over, you know, the recitation, the tajweed over it and also like a brief tafsir of the Ayah as well. So by the end of Ramadan, we can all become a Hafid of Surah Sajda and then the days I'm not there, someone can lead, Insha Allah, from me, Insha Allah, right? So that's the main objective here, Insha Allah, right? I mean, no, I'm just, I'm just kidding. But Insha Allah, we can all, you know, learn and memorize a Surah, you know, this, this beautiful Surah by the end of Ramadan. So that will be another major accomplishment on our behalf, Insha Allah. So please participate on that, participate in that every, every day in Ramadan at six PM, Insha Allah. That's also, also going to be virtual and I'm also going to send out a flyer and link for all that as well, Insha Allah. And that'll also be on the website. Next is for the kids, for the kids and the youth, Insha Allah. So that was for the adults and, you know, for families that can join in for Surah Sajda, memorization and learning it. And then the next program is going to be an interactive virtual session about virtues of blessings, virtues and the blessings of Ramadan. Because even the kids, they have to, you know, we're, we're going to have pre-Ramadan, you know, crash course or pre-Ramadan seminar. All, all the kids also need to learn about what, you know, what Ramadan is, where does it come from, what's the value, what's the virtue behind it? So Insha Allah, we're going to have that for kids every Saturday at two PM, virtual, ages six through eleven. And we actually are going to, Insha Allah, we're working with a sister who's known as the Young Muslima Mentor. She's on Instagram and mashallah, she has her own classes. She's, she's been tutoring and mentoring a lot of young Muslims and, you know, they, they love her class. I, I saw and I witnessed a lot of good feedback that she received from her own students. So she's, she's excited to join us, Insha Allah, this Ramadan and take care of that for us, Insha Allah, and help us, help our community, help our kids. So she's, she's excited to join us, Insha Allah, this Ramadan and take care of that for us, Insha Allah, and help us, help our community, help our kids and her own kids as well. They'll be joining in for this beautiful session. Because she's very interactive. She'll have slides, she'll have different cards and, you know, coloring and drawing, et cetera, for the kids. So ages six through 11, every Saturday at 2:00 PM. And on the, at the same time, Insha Allah, I also want to have a youth halakah for, you know, boys and girls on Saturdays. So that'll be ages 12 and above, right? So 12 and above, Insha Allah, can join that one. At the same time at 2:00 PM on Saturdays and that'll be, Insha Allah, virtual as well. And maybe I'll have, we'll have, Insha Allah, some, you know, guest youth, you know, youth figures throughout Atlanta to come join us and enlighten our youth, Insha Allah, throughout Ramadan. Because I know they're going to be busy with school still and Insha Allah, hopefully they, you know, they're coming to the masjid as well for tarawee. So but this once a week, Insha Allah, they'll actually have a little boost. And, you know, look forward to the, you know, upcoming days of Ramadan, Insha Allah as well. That's what we have for the adults, for the families, for the youth, Insha Allah. And Insha Allah, I'm, I'm looking forward to, Insha Allah, I hope everyone is ready to do that with us, Insha Allah, and to join us. And hopefully we have a way better Ramadan that we did than we did last year, Insha Allah. Jazakallah.
Jazakumullah Khair Imam Aqib. We hope for the best Ramadan we ever had, Insha Allah. So moving on, the final slide, anybody have any questions? We can try and help and answer. We of course need your feedback and participation. Only one question per person until everyone has a chance, right? Insha Allah. So let's, let's see if anybody has any questions.
Yes, some hands.
Yeah.
Brother Zafar, Zafar uncle?
Assalamualaikum, Mousan Bai.
No. Go ahead.
Mousan Bai, my question was, you said that all six families will be present. So if a family arrives, like my daughter, my son, can we sit together?
Yes, that's a possibility. If, if it's a family, they're coming together, yes.
For everybody's benefit, please ask questions in English.
Oh, sure, sure. Okay, also, I'm really happy to see the app. It's super nice. I'm really congratulating all the people and thank you for your time and effort. It's awesome application, I mean, app, we have it.
Jazakallah Khair. Thank you so much. Jazakallah Khair.
Assalamualaikum.
Wa alaikum salaam.
My question was regarding the QR code. Is one required for family of each individual member of the family needs a QR code?
Each individual member of the family requires a QR code. Who, if they have a phone with them, if they're, so if it's spouse, husband and wife, each of them needs to have their own QR code. If the kids have mobile phone who are older than 15 years old, they can have a QR code. But if the kids do not have a phone, then you can actually in the app, there's an ability to add a family member in there. So it should give you one, Insha Allah.
Brother Mousan, Assalamualaikum, Sadika.
Wa alaikum salaam, yes.
I have a question. So so far we allow only fardh namas in the masjid facility. So in a Ramzan, are we going to allow along with the fardh sunnah and all those other namas? So currently we allow only come in, do fardh, go out, right? So take example, Maghrib salah.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yes, so we do allow via fardh and sunnah, but that does not mean we are, unlike in the past where we used to, you know, stay in the masjid for long, I think that's not encouraged. So maximum we're trying to say is between tarawee and isha and tarawee, we're going to have one hour max limit that we can have anybody inside the, inside the masjid. So yes, we are, we are going to allow fardh and sunnah with social distancing inside the masjid, but yes, we will.
Okay.
But not for long, not like the past. The past is still past. Remember that. It's not over yet. That's the whole idea, right? I still recommend go home and do your sunnah. It's a sunnah to go home and do a sunnah, right? So let's bring that sunnah to life.
Okay, thank you, Mousan. I, I believe like the point is like try to minimize the stay in the like closed area. Okay.
That's, yeah, that's the common approach that we would like to apply, but Insha Allah.
Okay, Insha Allah, we'll not force people not to do sunnah, et cetera, like that. But we will, as, as a common sense, we'll try to just minimize like number of minute or hour stay in the, in a closed area.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think anybody else have any other questions? You can open your mic and ask your question. Two participants have raised their hand. I don't know which ones.
Assalamualaikum, Brother Mousan, this is Sadika. I have a question. I downloaded the app, but I could not find the registration page that you referred to in your-
Yeah. So the, I would, I would request you to, so the registration page on the right-hand side corner, it's a, it's a human icon on top. The only thing is don't register yet. Maybe we will send an email to the whole community to register because there are a few fields that we are also adding right now. So if you give us a couple of days, we will add them and then you can register, Insha Allah. But it's on the right-hand side corner, there's a, there's a, there's a person icon.
Yep, did that. I see that.
They have only, we have only added like five attributes there or the five values. But we are going to add a few more so that we can give enough information to CDC if they need it and for demographics as well, Insha Allah. I hope you like that.
It's awesome. Very nice. Congratulations to the team.
I have a question about your Sunday school. Can a child enroll anytime during their year or is there a particular time to enroll Sunday school?
So Sunday school typically is a semester basis. So the semester now apparently ends, Imam Aqib, when does it end? It ends this, before Ramadan, right?
We actually had our last class today and next Sunday, we're going to help, the, the kids are going to come help pack the food boxes, Insha Allah. So I mean, Insha Allah, after Ramadan, look forward to our summer school program that we're going to have. And then after summer school, we're going to have Sunday school again, the new semester for 2021.
Assalamualaikum, Mousan, Sadika again. Yeah, sorry, asking so many questions. One more question. So zuhur and asr. So we decided to do a namaz in an old building, right? Old facility. So, so is it like women's is going to be downstairs and men's going to be upstairs like?
Yeah. Yeah, Insha Allah. Yeah, because we don't expect a lot of crowd for zuhur and asr.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Brother Mousan, is the app called ECIC or something else?
It's called ECIC.
Thank you.
So there's a question, will Sunday school be online until further notice? Yes, at this point, Sunday school will be online until further notice. Will clinic administer the COVID vaccine? So they are, I let Brother Azeeb answer that question. Brother Azeeb, if you could answer that question. There's a question on chat that says, will the clinic administer the COVID vaccine?
Not, no, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't have the capacity to, number one, we haven't opened it physically. And number two, the logistic to do that is I know, I don't know any pre-clinic has that capacity from Georgia. So if, if, if we can, to actually inquire the Georgia, our, our parent, our parent organization, part of public Georgia, public health, if they allow us, then we, 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 we tell the community. But I, I doubt it. Well, as you know, we tried to, by the way, Brother Ahmad and I, hopefully we're going to start opening the clinic, study medicine by, by next week, Insha Allah, if depending on the physician or volunteer physician availability, Insha Allah.
Jazakallah Khair. Thank you so much. That would be great, Insha Allah, if we could acquire some vaccines and we could administer it to our community. That would be perfect, Insha Allah.
The issue with that is the liability.
Right, okay. So then my request to the community is do not wait for Brother Azeeb to give you a shot. Please go out and get your shots. That's my humble request. That, that would be the best option, Insha Allah. So there is a question from 6789784134. Can you unmute yourself and answer a question? Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Please feel free to email me, text me or call me, Insha Allah.
Where is your new building, by the way?
The new building is right adjacent to the old building.
Okay.
So the, if you, if you come into the entrance, you will find it'd be building number 200, 200, right? Yeah. Building number 200 and the old building is numbered as 100. So if the 200 building is a new building, which will open up for fajr, mubarak and isha, Insha Allah.
Mousan Bai, Assalamualaikum. One thought about the summary of the tarawee between isha and the tarawee. Since our goal is to keep the people there for a short period of time, we know people will pray sunnah right after isha usually. That's, that will happen and then unless we're keeping that summary very, very short, I think we should think about maybe moving that to after the tarawee. I don't know, just a thought, in case if somebody wants to leave, they can leave after tarawee and I don't know, I think that we need to kind of be conscious about not making it a long drawn out process where people are forced to listen to it. And then why stay in the masjid for a longer period of time? Just something to be cognizant about.
Yes, Insha Allah, no, our focus is to wrap everything in an hour. So say by, by having a brief, very, very brief, to the point of see is extending it beyond one hour, we will make adjustments, Insha Allah.
Yeah, tafsir is a very detailed thing, the word tafsir itself. It better be a summary. Somebody of the issue, somebody of what's, what's in the surah.
In my opinion, it's, it's better to understand and at least know that what we are going to read about that gives a, a different perspective.
Of course.
So we'll figure out, we'll figure out, Insha Allah, but good feedback. Imam Aqib and I will work on it, Insha Allah. We are past, okay, so we are past almost 10 minutes past our time. So I think if you have questions, please feel free to email us. Just a simple info@ec-ic.org and you can just email us on that and we'll still receive the emails. INFo, info@ec-ic.org. And we are also working on creating new emails for executive committee as well. So executive company email is going to be ec@the rate, ec-ic.org, executive committee, ec@ec-ic.org. So you can write to info or ec, doesn't matter, but feel free. Post your questions, any doubt, any concerns, anything that you would like to share. I'm more than happy to work with you on that, Insha Allah. Jazakallah Khair for attending. Thank you so much. May Allah accept our effort and may Allah give us Ramadan. And may Allah accept our effort during Ramadan as well, Insha Allah.
Amin, amin.
Thank you so much.
Amin. Allah Afeez.
Allah Afeez.